This meeting is called to order. We have prayer.
Inspire heads please. Dear Lord, we come to you today thanking you for the blessings you bestowed on each one of us. We hope that you will lead us, guide us, and direct us through this meeting so that we do what is best for the city of Bastrop. It's in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Let us have a moment of silence please for Councilman Rodney Seemster, City of Mendenham. Thank you. Mr. Locke?
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and I wish to welcome you to this meeting of the mayor and Board of Aldermen. Ms. Goldman, roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Neissen?
Here.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Locke?
Present.
I'm present, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. We have an interesting meeting planned this evening. It's filled with information. At this time, I'll offer some announcements to you. Last month, we had the ROTC students here to present the color guards. And at this time, I will ask those students, and is Colonel Morrow with us? If he would come and bring those students so that we can express our appreciation. And I will join you. We want to involve our students as much as possible because we realize that our students are our promise for tomorrow. So Colonel Morrow, I'm going to give you a certificate of appreciation if you would pronounce those students' names.
This award goes to Cadet Major Nanika Greeley. And this award goes to Cadet Modena Brown. And this award goes to Cadet Sergeant First Class Germaine Campbell. And unfortunately, we have one absent. This is for Cadet Brianna Blakely, but we'll make sure we get it to her.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Brown? Would you stand up? This is how this idea came about. I was over at Bastrop High one day, and she really put a plug in for the ROTC. So thank you, Ms. Brown.
Sergeant Harrison is their coach.
Sergeant Fred Harrison is their coach and is one of our instructors at ROTC. He works real hard for both the color guards and the other teams that he coaches, as well as Sergeant May that also coaches. So we're proud of all of what they do. Thank you, ma'am, again, Ms. Ma'am.
Thank you for bringing the students. I would like to recognize the 501 American Legion Post for sponsoring the Easter egg hunt at Dotson Park. We had nearly 300 children that enjoyed that festive activity, and I certainly appreciate what American Legion Post is doing in the community along with the mentoring program that they are jump-starting at this time. Sheridan Conway, is she here tonight? Okay. We have a certificate of acknowledgement for her accomplishment, and she hasn't made it yet, but we will take care of that. Here in the city of Bastrop, we realize that it is our responsibility to do something for all segments of our community, our students, our citizens, our businesses, our efforts towards economic development, and we are working every day to that end. We recognize we have some needs that need to be met. The USDA representative has been working with us, and we're trying to arrange a date so that she can set up camp here and look at some housing needs, take care of some applications. And of course, there's a criteria that has to be met, and we will be announcing that date as soon as the date is set. We're in the final stage of our recovery plan. In fact, next Thursday, we will be having a special call meeting. This is a very, very important meeting. We've had committee groups working together to develop a strategic plan for our moving forward. Certainly want to express appreciation to the governor's office for backing this plan, and I will be sending communication along with that plan to the governor's office. We will have a health fair at the municipal center. Gremlin University Nursing Program is hosting it along with Bastrop, the city of Bastrop sponsoring it from 10 to 3 o'clock. This is free and open to the public. The census forms are very, very important. I know I've said this over and over again, but we really need to make sure that the citizens, your neighbors, your friends are mailing back their forms. Right now, we are at a 56 percent rate of mailing back the forms in comparison to 2010 years ago. So please encourage everyone you know to respond to the census. The Cleanest City Contest is still in the works. It's going to require our efforts beyond that day in maintaining the efforts to keep our city looking well. That concludes my announcements. Do any of you have announcements from the Board of Aldermen?
No.
Okay. Yes, sir.
On the cleanup campaign that Ms. Vicki Carpenter is the chair, especially in my district, we are putting a dumpster on Martin Luther King South at the corner of Camaro Street next Monday for all the people that have anything in the waste or something they'd like to get rid of in District D. We do have a dumpster available next Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Item number four. At this time, I will entertain a motion for approval of our minutes for March 11 regular meeting.
Mayor, I make a motion?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five. Finance Committee Report Resolution 101324, Bills and Claims for the Month of March 2010.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 101324.
Properly moved?
Aye, second.
And second. Are there any questions? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six. Steve Nasaka, Resolution 101328, A Resolution Making Application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission for Approval of the Incurring of Debt and Issuing by the City of Bastrop, State of Louisiana of Not to Exceed $1,500,000 Revenue Anticipation Note Series 2010 and Providing for Other Matters in Connection therewith. Mr. Nasaka, welcome to Bastrop. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, and it's good to be here again. For the last six years, we have utilized this financing tool to do essentially cash flow borrowing, to normalize our cash flow for the entire 12-month period. What we do is we borrow up to, we're actually asking for authorization to borrow up to a million and a half dollars that will be repaid from property tax revenues when the millages are received at the end of the calendar year. So again, as I mentioned to you, this is something we've done for the last six years to help stabilize cash flow in the city of Bastrop. And it is a tool that over half of the police juries, school boards, sheriffs, and municipal government cities utilize as well throughout the state for that same very reason. Those that have a significant amount of their revenue that come from property taxes, as you do, use this tool. So this doesn't authorize you to incur debt. It actually authorizes, it's a preliminary resolution, allows us to move forward with the process. So you're under no obligation to borrow money, to pay fees, except for a little bit of bond commission fees, about a $150 application fee. So you're under no obligation until such time as we come back with a final ordinance after we've secured bond commission approval, after we've solicited bids from local banks, as we do every year. We open this up for all banks that operate, you know, in the area, in the community particularly in the city. And then have a chance to identify who the lowest interest rate bidder is, and then we bring that package back to you. At that point in time, you'll make a decision as to whether or not to utilize the tool or not and be under that obligation. So we pay property taxes. The city administration has done a good job in the past of properly stewarding that. It looks and acts like a line of credit in that the city only utilizes and draws down funds as necessary. We've never had to use the entire million and a half dollars before, and we pay it off as soon as property taxes are received in the February, March timeframe. So again, it's a mirror image of what the city has adopted for the last six years, and we would ask and recommend your approval of it.
You have heard the explanation by Mr. Nasaka, and I've worked with him for the past six years, and at this time, I will entertain a motion.
So who?
Properly moved?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Nasaka. Have a safe trip to back to Baton Rouge. Item number seven. Mr. Ron Carter. We have a special presentation. I know everyone has been on high alert in terms of how we're doing in terms of sales tax collection, and I asked Mr. Carter if he would come. We wish to keep you apprised of everything that goes on with the city as much as possible. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mayor, and the city council. I appreciate your offer to be here tonight. We're gonna, I first did this a couple months ago and talked to what we call the core group here, and I think Mark Vereen asked me to do it for the core group, and so afterwards, Sandra asked me to come and do it, Sandra and the mayor asked me to come and do it for the city council. So some of you don't know me, but I'm Ron Carter. I'm the administrator of the Sales Tax Commission since 2000. But most of you know Kim Vereen, my able assistants. I teach her the sales tax law. She teaches me how to act in public. So we have a good regular working relationship. I'm trying to give you a little history of our collections, what I want to do, and then we go into some other things. Back in 1996 is when I first started working here at the Morehouse Sales Tax Commission. And I've got the figures here. Let me see if I, yeah. This is where I started figuring. We collected $10 million in 1996 fiscal year, and this is the last year fiscal year we had was 15 million. So as you see here, well, I didn't start keeping up with increases and decreases by year until about 19, well, 2002. But we had a good year in 2002, but in 2003, we had a bad year, and in the last two years, we've had a loss some. This kind of gives you a little more understanding of what we've done. On a chart, I mean, on a graph here, I'll get used to this one. As you see, we've got an up and down, and sales tax is going to be like that most times. Sometimes it's because we've had an increase in sales tax or we just had a bad economical year. As you notice right here, we had, this is one of our best years we've had in fiscal year 2007, but in 2008 and 2009, we've had a little decrease. And this is this year, fiscal year this year, and I believe in the start of the fiscal year, Sandra, we predicted what, 15 or 20 percent decrease. And so far this year, we're standing at the end of last month's collections. We had an 11 percent decrease over last year's collections. So overall, our collections are holding better than we figured. But I've talked to several people throughout the state of Louisiana, other sales tax administrators. In fact, I talked to a friend of mine in New Iberia a couple weeks ago, and he told me this figure here for him is about 25, 26 percent. So we're not as bad off as some other parishes is what I'm trying to say. But you know, I still, I know, anytime you lose money, you have to cut back things. Yeah, decrease? Yep. It was 26, okay. I use the sheriffs usually because they have, their rate is unchanged over the years, and they're showing for this year only a 10 percent decrease while we're at overall at 11 percent. Now for the city of Bastrop, if you see here, I'm going to get this right soon. City of Bastrop is showing a almost 12 and a half percent decrease over last year. So what that means to the city council, y'all have less money to spend, but you have to provide more services. And I know that's hard to do sometimes. I don't know exactly where we stand in sales tax and property tax, but at one time, I believe we were, the sales tax in the city was like 50 percent of the budget. Is that about right, Sandra?
It's about that.
So if you lose 12 percent of your 50 percent, you've lost a lot of money. And this is a tax district, number one, that's the tax I put on a few years ago. But it only shows a 4.8 percent decrease for this year to date. One of the differences between this rate and this one here is because the city of Bastrop had the mill in it, in the mill when the mill closed. That's one of the reasons. That's one of the reasons. I can't say that's the only reason. When Mark first asked me to do this, he asked me to kind of give some insight in what we expect in the future. What does the future hold in sales tax collections? I'd like to see it's going up, but as we see by the charts that I showed you, it has not increased. Increase has not been there. But I'm hoping that the next year or so, especially this next fiscal year, it'll turn around. In fact, I told you, I talked to several sales tax collectors throughout the state, and I've had several of them tell me that theirs are beginning to inch back up, although some are still down, but some of them are beginning to inch back up. Other things that hurts us on sales tax collections is exemptions and exclusions. That I have no control over. That is done by the legislature. And so that's why I have the legislative members here. Anytime we have exemption or exclusion, in the past, every one of the entities have done resolutions to help me fight those exemptions and exclusions. We don't always win, but we're out there fighting. What can you do to help new businesses? If they're registered with the, for occupational license, Sandra and I have a real good working relationship with that. Before they register for occupational license, Sandra usually sends them over, makes sure we have them registered for sales tax. And the sheriff's office does the same thing. Now, I don't get so many out in the villages, but we still have, that's still one of the things that we have to do. We have to work on new businesses. One of our, excuse me, one of our biggest businesses are peddlers. You see these guys set up on the parking lots on Saturday and Sunday afternoon. Probably 98 percent of the time, we never get a dime off of sales tax sometimes. I've talked to Sheriff Mike Tubbs, and he told me he was going to start issuing warrants, or not warrants, but tickets, I believe, or citations for something like that. I don't know what. And other things, like I say, businesses that do not register. We have people that doing business out of their homes that have a sales, they're doing sales out of their home that we never hear about. Those are real hard to police. I guess the answer to the question would be, how do we police those? They're hard because, number one, we don't know they're there, and then when we do, it's hard to get a hold of them. So, and I think I've talked to most of the entities that we collect sales tax, the city and the sheriff's office. They're our big aid in helping us get people that have registered with occupational license and get them registered for a sales tax ID number. This is a list of some of the things that will affect the sales tax law and our collections this year. This is 2010, this ongoing session down in Baton Rouge. And some of the ones that, I'll just kind of point out the ones, I'm just going over the ones that I don't like. Oops, what did I do wrong? Taxpayer to recover attorney fees. What that says, if we go to court, if we lose in court, I have to pay that taxpayer's attorney Authorized taxpayers' appeal assessments and refund denials to a board of tax appeals. The board of tax appeals talking to the people with the State Department there right now, they have to do that. We do not as a local collector. But they say, they always, they say 95 percent of the times when they go to board of tax appeals, they lose. Now, this is an interesting one, and I don't understand it. I talked to Sandra about it the other day. Limit local sales tax rate to 5 percent. We're at 6 percent already. Well, I don't know, what were they, what were they thinking about there? But so that one, I have no idea. I haven't got an explanation on that. This one here require two-thirds of registered voters to vote upon the sales tax. And I don't know whether that's just a new sales tax or renewal, but that would, in the past, if you look at the past, a lot of times, the sales tax laws, I mean, vote, it's been less than two-thirds of the voters to vote upon it. But that's, the only thing that may save us on that, that is a constitutional amendment, and that would require two-thirds vote of both the House and the Senate, and then the majority of the voters. This is a taxpayer to recover costs associated to arbitrary assessments. What that is, a lot of times, we do, people will, we send them a request for payment, and they just, we know they're in business and they don't answer. So an arbitrary assessment is just assessment based on, based on an estimate that we have, and we make an assessment on that. What that was, that says there, what that law says there is that if this passes, and I make an arbitrary assessment against a taxpayer, and he goes to court, I'll have to pay his, any cost that he's associated with fighting that arbitrary assessment. And the reason I don't like that, arbitrary assessment is one of our tools that we use to collect, especially against delinquent or people that won't register for sales tax. And then the other, one of the other large ones, authorize refund of overpayment of sales tax for any period. The reason I don't like that, but right now, anything over four years, actually three years old, that's called prescribed, they're prescribed, or they can't go back and ask for a sales tax refund for any period past three years. But that also means we can't go back and audit for any period past three years ago. This one, to me, unless they open it up both ways to ask for a refund and also for an audit, would be the only way I think would be fair. But the only problem with that, you only got a short period of time to do it, just six months, from June 30th through January 1st, 2011. Now, like I said, these are all proposed legislation. They're not passed, none of them have passed yet. And I was talking with Sandra last week, and she asked me if I could get her a copy of the ones that we're opposed, and also get her a resolution for maybe next meeting I'll have.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday. And so I will try to have her a copy of any resolutions of the ones that we opposed and for the council to vote on. So what does the future hold? I wish I knew. I'm looking for a better future. I'm looking forward to improve over the next few years. I know we've lost several businesses in the last few years. We lost the mill, which was a huge loss to this community. But we also have lost, what, I believe, three of the automobile dealers we've had in town. Although the vehicles that a person buys from Morehouse Parish, we get the money no matter where they buy it. But what we lost on that was the sales tax from the repairs and the sale of parts. So, and that's, now they have to go to, pretty much to Monroe to buy those from those dealers. Any questions, Mayor, or council?
Okay. Thank you so much for that presentation, Mr. Carter. Would it be asking too much for you to go back to the bar graphs and talk a little bit about the natural tree and that you're seeing?
It's always, and even in the past, you see that it's always been a little wave. But you know, right here from 2000, fiscal year 2003 to fiscal year 2007, we had a real good raise there. Now, I think about that, when did that tax district come into play? Was that about that time, Sandra?
Yeah.
So that's probably a lot of that, the reason that we had that increase there. And even though fiscal year 2009, we've not, they closed the mill, I think, in this, in the end of fiscal, well, actually in, I guess, believe, December of 2008, that was the middle of our fiscal year 2009. We still had a pretty good year from 2009. And one of the reasons I feel that we've had, we've kept our collections up, we've had several, a couple of things that happened. We had the, in the south part of the parish, we had the pipeline to come through. Also, Highway 425 from here to cross it is being paved in, or four-laned, not cross it, but to the state line of Arkansas towards Hamburg, is being four-laned, and I believe that has helped us tremendously with people, not only people buying stuff, but also people staying in town and using our restaurants. I keep a list of, I guess it was my 10 largest sales tax collectors, taxpayers. The majority of those have pretty much stayed even, but one that, excuse me, that's really hurt us the most is the Department Motor Vehicles. Department Motor Vehicles, they collect the sales tax on all the cars for people that living inside the Morehouse Parish and give us, and send the money to the Department, I mean, the Morehouse Sales Tax Commission. But in the last few years, the last, I guess, seven or eight months, they're running about 30 percent down over the previous year. At one time, there was an article I read somewhere or heard in news that the vehicle sales in the state of Louisiana was 40 percent below the year before. That is tremendous. People just not buying cars. I mean, if their cars were, if they were running pretty close, we would still be up pretty, pretty good. Even though, like I say, if we go back to, we're still only down, like I say, 11 percent. 11 percent is still a lot, and 10 percent out of your revenue, and that hurts all. That hurts everyone. Hurts the schools, the police jury, sheriff's office, the city. It hurts us all. Any other questions?
You have any questions for Mr. Carter? Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a great presentation. And I'm optimistic, as Mr. Carter says, that is why it is so important for us to support the recovery plan. So I urge you again to be present next Thursday. the recovery plan, so I urge you again to, to be present next Thursday. I'm going to go back a little bit, I see Ms. Conway has arrived with Sheridan Angel Conway, her granddaughter, and at this time, because this is a school night, we're gonna recognize Sheridan for her accomplishment. Would you come to the microphone? Mr. McKee, would you give her some assistance with the microphone, please? She's going to tell us about her recent accomplishment and her success, and we certainly want to wish her well in her endeavors.
My name is Sheridan Angel Conway. My title is Little Miss Monroe, and I would like to thank the mayor for this award, and this is a really good honor to me, is very special.
Well, thank you, Sheridan, and I'm going to join you and give you a little recognition from the board of all persons, we're so proud of you. Keep up the good work. Her grandmother and mother are present, would you stand up? Thank you for sharing her with us tonight. Ms. Kay King, economic development, item number eight.
Let me see if I can handle this now. Maybe not as well. But I thought that was very interesting presentation by Mr. Carter, and it confirms many things of what I believe, that I think that Bastrop, although we can see declines, and we know that the economy nationwide has suffered, that I believe that Bastrop and Morehouse Parish is holding up better than some areas of the country, and I see things beginning to improve, and, and I'm really looking forward to more prosperity. I think that as we continue to build some of our retail, like with the Tractor Supply Company, that we're gonna be able to attract people into the community, and that we're gonna see our sales tax still remain stronger than many areas, as we attract people from South Arkansas, and even from some areas of Washtata Parish to shop, because Bastrop does have a unique quality, that we're the second largest city in northeast Louisiana, and so we are a subhub off of that Monroe area. And I think that we have some other opportunities to build that, which has been revealed in our redevelopment plan, and I urge everyone to participate in that, and look to see if we can get some common goals that we can work toward, and I think that we can be very successful. In the activity that's been taking place this, this month, I've actually had an increase in contacts with real businesses, I mean, sometimes we do a lot of work, and we don't have much to show, but I have been contacted by a couple of companies, one indirectly, and one, one company directly, that are interested in the IP warehouse building. I think that this is probably one of the strongest assets that we have in this community to market and actually sell right now, that has potential to create a lot of jobs, so I'm very optimistic, that I guess, because it's spring, that we're starting to see increased interest in that building. I did talk with Mr. Wilkes about a couple of buildings that he has listed in Morehouse Parish, and he, he concurred with me, that he's seen the increased activity, and he's shown that building several times. And now, in saying that, his objective to market that building is to sell it. The objective of the Economic Development Organization is to fill somebody, or to, to fit somebody into that building that's gonna create the most jobs, net jobs for the city of Bastrop. So that's our objective, and I'm sure it's the city's objective, and we don't have a lot of control over that, but it is an asset that I see that is very promising right now. I would love to have some type of announcement, but unfortunately, as we see the activity, things take time, things take time to build, so I would just ask everyone to continue to be patient, but I do feel like that brighter days are ahead. And, in talking about the things, and one of the reasons I come here is to let people know what the Economic Development Organization is doing, because sometimes it's, economic development is kind of one of those terms that fits a lot of things. This month, at the request of, in, in kind of coordination with Kelsey Short, and with some lists that were provided, provided by Kelsey Short and EB, we did send out a hundred and twenty-five letters, these were personalized letters, that were directed toward fabrication companies in the southern part of Louisiana, and the southern part of Mississippi. So we have mailed those out, and, and they, I was working on the 98 in Mississippi, and we just, I just finished the, the additional ones for the southern part of the state. And the state recognizes a strategy that we had been working on for probably the last four or five years, is that we build alliances with, with companies, we build associations with companies in the southern part of the state, and try to create satellite offices and satellite businesses in, in the northern part of the state, and we have some things to offer those businesses, including safety. So we're continuing to work on that strategy, and I think that strategy does go along with what's being done with the redevelopment plan. And I'd like to point out that we do have a new business, that, that was someone that was a direct contact with our office, and I provided them information, that many of you, as you drive out 165, you'll see that in the, in Hugh Rears Building across from the Chevrolet Place, that you'll see a lot of trucks out there now, from Johnny and John Trucking. That is a, a company that's located in Crowley. So they were looking for a more northern location, there is some potential there, that they're very interested in the area, and I'll be continuing to work with that company. As we know, we had a trucking company located here one time, that had a dispatch center, so I'm gonna continue to work with that company. But it, it's just another proof that this strategy is a very good strategy, to try to build these alliances with, with companies in the, the southern part of the state. And I know, I just wanted to give a short report on Makin Ridge Foods. I know back at the end of last year, we had a young man come, and he had a good business plan, and we put this company in a building in the industrial park, and I would like to commend the city of Bastrop, you know, with the support, we can't provide monetary support to companies, but that the support that the city has shown this company, and helping him get started in business, and I'd like to say, after several months, these things don't happen quickly, but he sent me designs for the product, and he's getting very close to distributing. In fact, I think that possibly by the middle of next month, he's gonna be distributing that product, and so I just thought I'd like to give you a follow-up on that, that, that business is on track. The concept of growing businesses ourselves is a very popular concept, when people begin to talk about, you know, starting entrepreneurial support, and doing entrepreneurial-type businesses. But we have to recognize that this is a very hard challenge for companies now, to get started in business, and so I know Mr. Irwin has worked very hard at this, and, and we're still hoping for some very good success on a unique and delicious product that he's gonna be marketing. And so I think that would summarize, I think, that we're gonna be covering some more things with the redevelopment plan, and I would encourage everyone to participate in this, because it will take a, a lot of people being on the same page at the direction we're going to make this a success, but I believe that Mr. B has come up with some very good, good ideas on things that we can work together to make happen. Do I have any questions about any other things I covered? I know I covered quite a lot in a...
I have one, Ms. King. What's the estimated time that Trucker Supply would be finished?
As I, as I understand that, they were gonna try to be finished by June, but they, when I talked with Mr. Long, who was the developer on that project, that they had a lot of delays because of the weather, and I think that's also delayed our road project too. You know, the, the weather from the, the end of last year was just awful, and he did say that, but I believe it'll be around June.
One other, the old Sinker Service Building, how many people have?
I've had two, in fact, almost, I've got another contact I haven't made, but I've had two contacts on that building this month, for very good, for very good job-producing companies. Now, I sent out an information packet on that company yesterday, to the North Louisiana Partnership, that they had a prospect, and I had also had a prospect from, kind of an indirect source, a businessman in the West Monroe area, and I'm kinda wondering if these are the same prospects, but if it's two, or if it's three, maybe the third time is the charm, but this would be a high-producing possibility for maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty jobs, and so I'm excited about it, I can't give any information about it, but, because it's very preliminary at this point, but I think that the building is a very good fit.
Yes.
Very nice building.
Thank you.
Thank you for...
Are there any other questions for Ms. King? Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor.
We appreciate the work that you do. Item number nine, Ms. Suzie Sell, Dixie Cleaners sign in historic district.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here because I made a mistake. I put up a sign last year, in the middle of the summer of 2009, and I didn't know I needed a permit. That was my mistake. I'm here to try to correct that mistake to the best of my ability. My husband and I bought Dixie Cleaners in 2000. In 2008, my husband died tragically, and I had to learn to run the business. So I started immediately trying to learn everything I could about the store, and the maintenance, and the operation, and the employees, and everything else. Business was down, just like the sales tax man was talking, you know, we, we all are in this slump right now, and I started saving money to put up a new sign. At the time that we bought Dixie Cleaners, we had a lighted flashing sign above the awning. I wanted to replace that sign, so I bought the sign that I have hanging right now. I hired a local sign company, Carter Signs, they didn't tell me I needed a permit, so they put the sign up for me. About a week later, Mr. Ernest Lee came to see me, to tell me that I was in violation of the ordinance on the lighted flashing sign that I had. I immediately went to see him, and we talked about it. I was under the understanding that since the Rose Theater had the same kind of sign, and there was another sign around the corner from me, that there wouldn't be anything wrong with my sign. And he informed me that in January of 2009, there had been some confusion about the ordinances, and a bunch of letters had been sent out to local businesses to inform them of the ordinance. He produced a list of the businesses that had been notified, and we both noticed that Dixie Cleaners was not on that list. He told me my next step would be to contact the council. I mailed a certified letter to my council member, which was Mr. Armstrong, and I'm meeting him for the first time tonight. I mailed that in November, it was received, and I asked for an exception to the ordinance because of undue hardship. I think there's a provision in there that says that the council has the right to modify the, the ordinance if there is undue hardship on the business. I may not, I'm sure that's not the correct wording in it, but I spent thousands of dollars on the sign itself, I spent another couple of three thousand dollars to have it erected on top of my building, and have it wired in, and my main goal in getting the sign was to increase my business. Of course, we're all on one-way streets, but I had to have it facing the traffic, so that my business would be noticed. And I didn't hear anything from the council on the letter that I sent, so I contacted Mr. Lee in February of this year, and I, I may be a little bit off on the dates, but I contacted him, and I met with the mayor, and talked to her about it. I then went to see the historical district, I went to one of their meetings following that, because I knew they made recommendations to the council on what needed to be followed in the historical district. They sent me a letter and denied my request to get an exception to the ordinance, and said that I had to remove the sign. I'm here to ask that I get an exception. I feel like if the Rose Theater has a lighted flashing sign, and they were approved for that lighted flashing sign, then their building is no different than mine. And, so that's what I would like to have.
Thank you, Ms. Sell, for expressing your, your wishes, there are some differences when it comes down to the Rose Theater. Our attorney is not here tonight, so we, we did want to allow you the opportunity to express your feelings, your views. The ordinance is as it stands.
Yes.
Nothing has changed with the ordinance, and the council is in no position to, to, to act on your request tonight.
Right. I would like to point out about the, the part about the exception that's in there, that says...
Ms. Sell, thank you so much. Our attorney is not present tonight to, to argue that.
I understand, I, I just wanted to let the council members know that, you know, that that was there, and I would like to plead for that undue hardship, and if I don't qualify for that, I would like to know how I need to prove that it would cause a hardship on my business. I employ twelve people, I want to stay in business.
Thank you for expressing your views.
Thank you.
Item number 10, ordinance 104195, an ordinance to enact section 9-119.1 and 8-138 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to supplement the criminal code to provide for the criminal offenses of, number one, resisting an officer, and, number two, possession of drug paraphernalia. Chief Black.
These ordinances have been brought up before. The resisting an officer ordinance is just upgrading or updating our current ordinance. We have it in the book, but now, we're gonna upgrade it or update it to match that of the states. The possession of drug paraphernalia is a new ordinance for the city, and that way, we want it added to our criminal code, so that the city court can hear those cases as well.
At this time, I will entertain a motion. Last month, you remember this was brought up, and this was in layover, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Properly moved and second, are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Chief Black. Item number 11, resolution 10-1327-A, resolution authorizing the city of Bastrop through its mayor to make application to USDA rule development program for a grant in order to purchase a vehicle for the Bastrop Fire Department.
Good afternoon, councilman mayor.
Good afternoon.
This grant, I spoke with the mayor, we were in need of a vehicle, and of course, with the times being as they are, and finances down, she directed me to look around and see what options was available, so we found a grant with the USDA that can match either thirty-five or fifty percent of the cost of the vehicle, and so that's all this is, is that she would be trying to help us get that grant to pay for as much as a third or a half of the, of the vehicle's cost.
At this time, I will entertain a motion on this request.
I make a motion, mayor.
Second. Properly moved and second, any questions? Discussion? Olive?
Excuse me, mayor. When you were able to purchase this vehicle, Ms. Montgomery?
Well, just like any grant, it's a process, and, you know, that's not to say we'll get it, this is only authorized, giving her the authority to help us apply for it, but they have, this particular session, I think, is at the end of April or May, but now, we're late getting in, the police department, may I mention that? The police department, may I mention that, Mayor? The police department is applying, it's a different grant. It's not the same money, but they're applying for three police cars. But now they have been in for the last month or two, so they probably have a better opportunity. But even if we don't get it this time, then when they do them again in the fall, maybe we'll be able to get it then.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief Montgomery. Item number 12, Request for Mayor and City Council to declare land at the northeast corner of Pruitt Street and West Madison Avenue as surplus property and permission to advertise for sale. Mr. McKee.
Mayor, council, I believe a citizen has spoke with one of the council members with regard to this. This land has been adjudicated to the city for several years. And a request has been made that we declare it, consider declaring it surplus property and put it up for bid. I'll briefly try to explain the process. Will, Ms. Goldman, help me here. We'll have to get an appraisal on the land and we can't sell it for no less than what the appraisal value is. And we'll put it up for auction. That will come back to the council for approval. Is, is everyone familiar with where this particular plot is located? Are there any questions?
Familiar with the location? Okay. Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion to take action on this request.
So moved, Mayor.
Properly moved?
Second.
And second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McKee. Item number 13, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion, Mayor.
Second.
Properly moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.